You ready to go? Looks like we are. I'd like to call this City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency meeting to order. Would you please join me in doing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Apologies to members of the public and staff for not starting quite on time. We had our closed session over in the library because of all the construction work going on, and I'm afraid I didn't quite estimate the right amount of time for moving from place A to place B. Greg, do we have a report from closed session? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Malpe, I think you, Jeff, you had told me there are no changes to the order of the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
The council is okay? No changes from the dais? Okay. Greg, report from closed session.
There's no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Greg, council communications and announcements. We're gonna start with Matt this time.
You always start down here.
I do?
Yeah.
Oh, well, then, we're gonna start with...
Start down there.
We'll start with Cameron this time. I saw him leaning forward. I'm like, well, I gotta trip him up, so.
All right. Thank you, Mark. A couple things which many of my colleagues participated in, and I can let them also chime in, so I'll be brief. I attended Spring Fling from the San Carlos Education Foundation on Saturday night. My wife and I did our best impression of summer of '69 hippies. And then Ron and Mark and I did our best impression of chefs, and we... What did we raise? $1,100, I think, was the going rate?
Yes, I think that's right.
For a dinner prepared by the council. So that was...
Yes.
Yeah. That was a lot of fun, a great event, which raised a lot of money for education in San Carlos. I attended the State of the City address, which I'll let Mark go into in depth. And then we had our first meeting of the Subcommittee on Improving Communication with Technology, where we talked about, you know, it was a good discussion about different, some brainstorming ideas in which, ways in which we can use technology to allow residents to communicate with the city, allow the city to communicate about events and news, and to foster more of a dialogue with residents. So I'm excited about the process and looking forward to future meetings. That's it.
Matt, now you're down here. So the first one that I wanted to let folks know is at the last BPAC meeting, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting, that's associated with CCAG, we had an item, the City of San Carlos had an item on the agenda. We were asking to have our grant funding window extended because of the project for East Side Connect. And Matt and I had to take some people to dinner and spend a lot of money. We'll give you the bill later, but we did get it approved, so we've got the extension on that funding.
And it was money well spent.
Yeah. I'm just joking. We didn't go to dinner. That was an idea. I should've thought of that, though. And then the last item I have is just something I want to raise with the council and staff. I raised it in an email, but I wanted to do so also from the dais. And that has to do with the ABAG MTC meeting that took place in Sacramento, apparently. And I had sent an email to the city manager and to the mayor indicating that I had found out through another council member from another city that this was taking place. And I was a bit surprised because we didn't apparently know anything about it. Nothing was said from our dais about this meeting going on. And so I want to push further on that. I would like to know what their agenda was, what the outcome of the meeting was, what authorized them to tackle these subjects. And I would really like to know why we received no information on it. It's a real breakdown in communications. It's problematic in my mind, to begin with, that we've got these regional bodies doing things, and for them to be doing things and we don't know about it just compounds the problem. So.
Bob? Don't think there was much. Cameron alluded to the State of the City. Think the Subcommittee on the Remodel... I think we met, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Subcommittee on the Remodel of the Council Chambers. Councilmember Grocott and I met with the architect and talked about some things, and we're moving in a positive direction, I think, in that area. We have a sewer board meeting this week, so I don't think there was anything in the last week or two weeks that came up, otherwise.
Thank you, Bob. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't think I went to anything, but turns out I did. I started as soon as I started writing down some things. I attended a regularly scheduled HART board meeting. HART is Housing Endowment and Real Estate Trust of San Mateo County. Also went to, on the same day, went to our town hall meeting we had here in the Council Chambers on Police and Fire. It was a Police and Fire update, and I think that the representatives from both agencies did a wonderful job. Chief Rothaus and Deputy Fire Chief Stan Moppen. It was a nice presentation. I think there was probably 40-plus people or so here. Very informative, and I think a lot of people got some questions answered. Also attended a Council of Cities Dinner on the 28th. I think we had a representative of the California League of Cities? Is that what you called?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we also, I also attended a Housing, San Mateo County Housing Committee meeting last week where we discussed distributing federal block grant funds for various projects up and down the county that are related to housing and rehab and all kinds of services. I cannot believe the number of needy programs that there are out there. And they're all worthwhile programs. It's unfortunate, there's a limited amount of money to distribute. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. Jeff, following up on Matt's comments, can staff report back on the results of researching just the questions that he raised? About ABAG?
Yes.
Okay.
We can certainly look into that and report back if that's the desire of the council. We can either agendize it if the council would like, or we could put it in an upcoming council newsletter, whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Personally, Matt, my inclination, at least to start with, is to do it in some written communication form, and we can follow up on that if it warrants. And I particularly would also like to find out what the breakdown in communication is on the off chance that something came to me that I failed to forward. I don't think that happened because I went back and looked, but, you know, that's always possible. As others have mentioned, I participated in Spring Fling also. I was amazed about how much money we raised. I couldn't believe they made us a live auction item, but that was, I suppose, interesting. The Council of Cities Dinner was, I sat at the table with a bunch of folks from Belmont, the Belmont City Council and Belmont Community, and it was nice to see there, you know, there was a little bit of a change in the relationship there, so we'll see if that grows and prospers. I, too, attended the Police and Fire briefing that Ron was talking about and had similar reactions to it. I attended one other briefing that was put on by staff as well that I just wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention, and that has to do with the, I guess I'll refer to it as the dog situation on Britton Avenue. And I would strongly recommend that my colleagues, if you have not done so already, is to get briefed on that situation by staff, because I learned a bunch of things that night. I think staff learned a number of things that night that were not known. It's a pretty significant issue. There's a lot of tension being focused on it, as there should be, to address the problem. But I think it'd be useful for the dais to understand that in more detail about what's really going on there. And then State of the City was, I will have to confess and say, my main feeling about the State of the City was, thank goodness, it was over, when it was done, just because it had taken a lot of time to prepare. But it was fun, and I think the six panelists did a great job in the discussion. A lot of interesting things that came up, many of which duplicated results that were in the climate survey. The one point I wanted to make, though, about this particular State of the City address where we had, you know, six randomly chosen residents who didn't know each other talk about issues of concern in the community and the future of the community, was I was very impressed with the fact that we actually had a thoughtful, reasonably far-ranging conversation. I can think of a lot of other communities in San Mateo County where you would be at your peril if you picked six people at random and stuck them up on stage because you're not sure what would happen. I think it says something about the strength of the community of San Carlos and the connectedness that many of them referred to, that they liked about San Carlos, that it was really on display that night. So I really want to thank them for all of their hard work and their participation. With that, Jeff, do you have any comments on city administrative business?
I do. I have two updates for the council this evening. The first, you'll have to put your successor agency board hat on. On February 24th, the successor agency, you all, approved a Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS, for July through December of 2014. After the successor agency approval, the staff was made aware by the Department of Finance of the need to report the cash balance of any remaining housing bond proceeds on the report cash balances page. This item has not previously been required by the instructions from the State Department of Finance. The successor agency has $1,065,139 of remaining housing bond proceeds. That minor change to the report balance was added to the ROPS for 1415A before it was submitted and approved by the Oversight Board, so that the version that was submitted to the Oversight Board was slightly different than the version that the successor agency had approved, and we wanted to bring that to your attention and the public's attention as well. One other item, Councilmember Grocott had asked at the last meeting if I could provide a quick update on the remodel project that's happening outside in the lobby area in the Planning and Building Department. As the council is aware, this project is tackling several different things in that area. It's addressing some ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, issues. It's putting in fire sprinklers, and it's creating a more open work area to face and interact with the public at the building and planning counter, reorienting things so that there'll be more of a public presence available in our lobby. The anticipated completion of the project is the end of April. They're gonna be closing the counter on Monday, April 28th, so that the department can move in, set up, do all those kinds of things, so they're open for business. That'll be well advertised. Currently, all the wall framing and drywall is complete. The new HVAC controls are in. The sprinklers are roughed in. The new work area cabinetry and workspaces is on order. And next steps, which are underway right now, are the installation of the ceiling tiles, the lighting, the installation of signage, and the installation of a records vault system down in the planning area.
Okay.
If I may just make a comment on that particular item. As you know, because of the work that I do, I interact with building and planning on occasion. And I just wanted to commend the staff over there. They're over in the library upstairs, and they didn't miss a beat. I had to go over there, I think, the first Monday that they were open, and, you know, just the way they run it and they interact with the folks that walk in and so forth, it's working really well in the, you know, on the interim of being over above the library.
Good. Good to hear. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, council appointments. For the benefit of my colleagues and for the public, we interviewed a number of candidates for the Economic Development Advisory Commission, which is one of the commissions set up by the council, this one to focus on economic development issues. There was an opening that was created on the commission because one of them ran for public office and got elected to the dais. And so we had to replace Cameron. We held those interviews last week, and however, tonight, we need to act on actually appointing somebody to the commission, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make the big emotion to appoint Daniel Gurr to the Economic Development Advisory Commission to fill an expirer term ending June 30th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the...
I would just like to say, since I was not, unfortunately, I was unable to participate in the interview process, my son was sick and we had to take him to the doctor's office, so I'm gonna be abstaining from this vote.
Fair enough. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson is abstaining, and Mayor Ober.
Yes. Thank you. We will now move on to item seven, presentations. We have a presentation from a community member, Betsy Schneider, who also serves as our representative on the mosquito abatement district. She's going to update us on things going on at the district. Hi, Betsy.
Good evening. Well, I'm really happy to report to you that the health of this board is definitely...
Can you speak in the microphone?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. So I'm happy to report that the health of this board, the mosquito vector control board, has definitely improved, and other cities are following the lead of San Carlos and becoming more proactive. Three cities, South City, Burlingame, and Atherton, and also the Board of Supervisors for the county at large, have not renewed the terms of their trustees. And these are trustees who served on the Finance Committee during the period of time of the embezzlement. Atherton actually appointed a gentleman who was on the grand jury that investigated the district. So we're in good hands, and our finance director, Rosendo Rodriguez, is still doing a phenomenal job. You do get the financials every month. The staff continues to perform at a really, really high level. And at the recent mosquito vector control conference in San Diego about three weeks ago, four of the staff gave oral reports, and four of them made posters on different areas that they're involved in. They were huge posters, and I gave to you minimalized copies. Maybe they're hard to read because there's a lot of information on them, but they're doing a great job. So you might be interested to know that that 80s Jipti mosquito that's responsible for yellow fever was actually discovered by accident by our district. We have lots and lots of surveillance traps for a variety of mosquitoes that we track that are common to our area, but in one trap set out at Holy Cross Cemetery, there was this mosquito that is capable of spreading yellow fever. So the staff really does a great job in keeping up on everything that's going on. And of the 50 counties I might mention, of the 50 counties in the state, three of them have this mosquito, San Mateo, Madera, and Fresno. So that's it. And I guess our manager, last time he was here, told you about the public outreach that was done in Menlo Park. I said, I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Betsy. Are there any questions for Betsy?
Okay, thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thank you for your service, and hopefully, the future will be less exciting than the past. All right, that finishes presentations. We move on to public comment. This is when members of the public can address the council on topics of interest to them, typically topics that are not on the rest of the agenda. If you do wish to address the council, we ask that you consider filling out a speaker's card and providing it either to the dais or to Crystal. I have one speaker's card this evening from Andre Carpio. Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilmember. The last two meetings, I make comment about the fire of San Bono, and the object in which I relayed the fire is because people who did the investigation, if they did, jumped into conclusions that were not appropriate with the type of accident. And as I said, I have made myself my own investigation, and I found that it didn't matter that people blamed the well, and the well, the cause of the fire was not due to a failure of the well, but in a collapsing of the pipe because previous to the accident, there was an excavation that emptied underneath the pipe, and when the pipe was not supported with the traffic bouncing on it, then the pipe collapsed. And as I said, it didn't matter if the pipe would have been new or old, the failure would have happened at the weakest point, which is the well. And I'm not going to elaborate on the technology of the well, but once there is a difference in temperature in a metal, then the metal crystallizes in a different fashion. And the only way to correct that is to anneal the metal. But you cannot anneal such a large pipe. You need to anneal little parts. Then the well reinforced because the proportion of tension is equalized. And so in this point here, I want to make a parallel to the theft of my solar car. The police jumped into conclusion that whoever took the car because he had it was his car. And although I had made claim then it was my car, and the story that you got is like what we call a lullaby, you know? You tell that to the children, and they fall asleep. But that was not my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. I have no other speaker's cards at this point, so we'll pass on through public comment to approval of the consent calendar. These are items that are typically, are approved en masse without discussion by the council, although any council member may ask to have an item, or staff or public may request to have an item pulled off and considered separately. Are there any items that council members wish to pull off and address separately? Yes, Matt?
Item F.
Item F?
Yeah.
Okay. Any others? Seeing no others, I will entertain a motion for approving items nine A through E.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt, excuse me, that we approve consent calendar items A through E.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. We will take up item nine F under new business, I presume, Jeff?
Yeah, we can take it now, or we can put it to the end of new business at the pleasure of the City Council.
I think we'll, I think our tradition, to some extent, is at the end, so we have a fairly short agenda. We'll do that then. Reports to council. Item 10A, update on police services. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Ober, members of City Council. Just need one moment to get this PowerPoint up. Again, good evening. You have my staff report. Each year, I come to the City Council to do an update on police services, and you have my comprehensive staff report on a variety of police-related matters and police service issues. So I don't need to go over the entire report, but I did think it would be good to pull out two items that I think are of particular interest to the committee, to the community, and just spend a couple minutes on those items. And so let me do that really quick. Obviously, I just want to talk first about burglaries and Part I crime rates. These are the, how we measure Part I crimes. There is a list of Part I crimes that we measure, and we use those as kind of a benchmark year to year to see how we're doing overall. In terms of our Part I crime rate in the community, really, you can't see the trend line, because the trend line is so flat and it lays right on top of a grid line that the, you know, the crime trends over since 2003 is virtually flat, which I think is good news for a community that's grown as much as we have, to be able to keep that way. There's the bad news. Burglary rates have been up. Obviously, we had high years in '04 and high year in '06, but we've seen a consistent trend in the last several years for an increase in burglary, and last year was not a good year at all. When we take a look at how we see the burglaries compared to the rest of the community, we can see San Carlos, and you've seen me benchmark against these cities before, because they're so similar demographically and they're so similar in terms of population, that they're just great cities to benchmark against. Again, more burglaries than Belmont and Foster City. And then typically, Los Gatos and Burlingame will have more than us. In this case, this year, less, this last year, we had more than Los Gatos, so with Burlingame having more burglaries than we did, so. But what we did see, though, fortunately, so far, is that we took a look at the burglary rate for the first six months of 2013, and I compared it against the very last six months. And what we can see is that the last six months, these current past six months, we've seen a 27% decrease in our burglary rates and our residential burglary rates as compared to the first six months of 2013. That is the current trend. That's what we're seeing currently, and my hope is it'll continue. One of the things that we're also interested in, you've seen a lot related to traffic in your staff report. There's a lot been done in 2013 as it relates to traffic. One of the things that we've done is concentrated enforcement with other neighboring jurisdictions. We help them, they help us. And we spend an awful lot of time on pedestrian stings and pedestrian decoys. Pedestrian violations are particularly dangerous because, obviously, they are unprotected. And a car is still dangerous to get in an accident, but at least you're surrounded by metal. Obviously, pedestrians are not. So we spend a fair amount of time on pedestrian stings. And this, in this case, this is at Prospect and the avenue, and you can see the violation of the right of ways that'll occur from time to time. And this is one of, that's one violation. Here's another. I think that young lady should make a lot of money for doing that, but she doesn't, so she's a volunteer. But we work very, very hard on pedestrian stings, and the word gets out pretty quickly that we're zero tolerance on pedestrian violations. So other than that, you have the staff report. I'm happy to take any questions, and at this time.
Actually, before seeing my colleagues have questions, chief, thank you for the presentation, by the way. What comprehensive report you're referring to?
The staff report, yes.
Oh, sorry. I, for some reason, I thought you were talking about something that had been handed out on the dais. Fine.
No problem, sir.
Thank you. Questions for the chief? Cameron?
Thank you, Chief Rothaus.
Sure.
I, there's a lot, I have a lot of conversations with residents about burglaries.
Uh-huh.
And there's a lot of speculation, ideas about why burglaries are on the rise or have been on the rise. Do you, or does the sheriff's office have a perspective on why burglaries are up in San Carlos?
Honestly, we don't. We really don't. I mean, there's a lot of surmising. I think when it comes to crime rates, whether it's burglary or a lot of, or the rising and fall of general crime rates statewide and nationwide, criminologists disagree as to why crime rises and fall. Some attribute it to the economy, some attribute it to changes in probation and parole type of things. So unfortunately, we do not know. What we do know, though, is that we've made a lot of arrests and burglary in this county recently. In fact, a judge recently told one of our sergeants that virtually every, you know, majority of his calendars are burglars, and we're putting a lot of them away. New changes in laws with respect to incarceration of property crimes could change that and spin these people out pretty quick. What we have seen with respect to burglars is we've seen, we've seen gang involvement in burglary, particularly Nortenos coming up from South County and doing those burglaries. We've seen a lot of that. We've made a lot of arrests on these Nortenos, and so they are fortunately, at least in San Carlos, a little bit laying low recently.
And I noted from the staff report that burglary encompasses a couple of different crimes, including using a fake credit card at a, or using a stolen credit card at a retail establishment. So the chart you showed was burglary overall, and you saw, and so if we were to look at a trend on just residential burglary?
Right.
Is it, do you see similar trends, or...
I see similar trends, because I think what we've seen particularly has been, you know, the rate of commercial versus residential usually stays pretty solid. And so, you know, I think that the trends hold true for both, commercial and residential.
Okay. Okay. And then when residents ask, you know, what can I do to prevent burglary in my neighborhood? What is sort of the, the top couple of things that the sheriff's office is recommending?
Well, thank you for asking that. We've, we've continued to put out a lot of, you know, alerts and burglary crime prevention any opportunity we can. Obviously, it seems, is, is a few things that come to mind. Number one is to know your neighborhood and know your neighbor, so you know when something is not familiar and doesn't look right. Another is to make sure that you, you kind of harden the target. So that means really good door locks and good window locks, and an alarm system is also important. And what we find too, strangely enough, is that, you know, dogs are very effective, you know? And I hate to tell somebody, go get a family dog to reduce burglaries, but they're, they don't like them. The burglars don't like the dogs being home, they don't like the barking, they don't like the noise. And we know from interviewing burglars that they've avoided homes with dogs. And so those are just kind of the top three things that I could say.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
You bet.
Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a question, if you have any comment on the recent items that were, well, one was reported in the paper, the other wasn't. But I know one of the businesses downtown on San Carlos Avenue, there was a, you know, the side window smashed and some items stolen from that store. And then close to that business, the situation with Jeffrey's Jewelers, you seem like some, you know, going after big-ticket items and specific kinds of things.
Yeah, well, to start with Jeffrey Jewelers, Jeffrey's Jewelers robbery first. I mean, that was a street robbery, so it didn't happen in the business. It's not a common robbery at all, but it does happen in areas, cities closer to the airport. It's possible, we believe, that this person was followed from that area. We do have some, some evidence in that case, not a lot, but we have some that we can work. That's not the first time we've had a street jewelry robbery. It is not uncommon for jewelers and people who are going from show to show with all that jewelry to be put under surveillance by organized crime and then robbed in other locations. That's happened before in San Carlos, a long time ago, and it's extremely rare. On the other burglary you talked about, I'm sorry, I don't have any information for you on that one right now.
Okay.
No questions? Ron?
Yes. I, I will tell you, I will also tell you, the city council candidates don't particularly care for dogs either. Run into a few.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of dogs in this town, I would tell you.
Yes, there are.
One question I have was, is, do you think, or has there been any evidence to show that the prison realignment of the last few years has had any effect on crime rates or burglary rates?
I think, you know, I'll tell you, most of us in this profession at this position think it's going to. We've seen it already. We can see it in the jail, the way they act and behave in the jail when you're incarcerating people for years into a county jail, and the dynamic that changes. We're beginning to gather data and, and, and we have analysts in place. Fortunately, with that realignment came money for local counties to analyze the impact of realignment. And so there hasn't been quite enough time to come out with any definitive thing. So we're trying to reserve our judgment to let the data speak for itself, but we believe it's going to show an impact in property crimes.
The other question I have was, do you find that sometimes when you arrest a burglary suspect that you've suddenly solved two or three or four of them?
Yes. And, but a lot of times we can't charge them for those. You have to have enough evidence to charge them for them all. And so, but we know sometimes when we take one guy off that he's responsible. But, you know, they're in crews, so, you know, they got, these guys are running crews. You have a group of gang members, there's maybe a dozen of them, three are going to go out today, different three are going to go out tomorrow in another car. Then you peel those three off, then there's three more behind them who will go to a different city because San Carlos just made an arrest, so they're going to go to Belmont. It's, that's how they're running and gunning like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, chief. I just had a couple of questions. One, actually, the first one on the sort of traffic and motor resources side. A couple of years ago, we actually augmented the resources we had in that area. I know that from, from comments that I get from the community that that was, A, very appreciated, and B, it all, it seems that there are always more places to patrol. So I'd be interested in your perspective on resourcing levels, whether you feel we're at an adequate level of resources on that front, whether you're having difficulty doing your force deployments, give input from the community or what have you.
Yeah, I think, I think this city council, with the, with the direction that they gave staff to increase traffic deputies by one, puts us at two traffic deputies plus a traffic sergeant. Many of you know Steve Pettit, who's very involved and actually rides as well. I think, you know, pound for pound, it'll make us the strongest in terms of dedicated traffic enforcement that I'm aware of in the county. So I think, you know, I think this council spoke loud and clear with respect to how important traffic safety is with that, and I think we're well positioned.
Okay. Good. The other question I had was sort of a follow-on to a question that Cameron had asked you, having sat, having attended a number of your community presentations, which I think are excellent, and I would encourage everybody to, to check them out. I think you actually have them videotaped, do you not?
We do. In fact, Jasmine Frost just gave me one. We're looking at it, making sure everything's kind of copacetic, and I think she's going to go ahead and put that up.
Again, I know you touch on some of the, the issues of, or not issues, but responses that, that homeowners can take to try and make themselves more secure. The question is, how visible and accessible is that information on, on the city website? Both the recommendations and your, your video presentations and whatnot?
I really haven't drilled down, but my sense is, is I'm sure it's on there. I mean, we have a list of tips, crime tips that should be on there, crime prevention tips, but I can certainly double-check to make sure it's on there. But as you know, we've put it out in the quarterly newsletter that sends City Managers' newsletter out. We put that out, went to every household. We put them out on SMC alerts. You know, we tell people when there's a burglary sometimes. We have, we have over 6,000 people signed up for SMC Alert. Only two cities are more dialed in than us, and that's Redwood City and San Mateo in this county. Nobody has more than we do. We use it a lot for the right reasons. And, and so we get tips out that way. And, but I'll double-check the website and make sure we, we're up to date there. Thank you.
It is, it is an interest, I mean, I, I wouldn't necessarily want to make it so prominent that it was the first thing that visitors to the site saw, but on the other hand, it is a general topic of interest for many people in the community. And as I mentioned, I, I think your presentations are, are very informative and, and very engaging. So I'd like to, you know, make sure that people have an opportunity to see them if they can't come in person. Okay. Any other questions? Looks like not. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Item 10B, update on PG&E natural gas line 147. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malpe, City Manager. This will be a brief report, as it's virtually the same report I gave you at the last meeting. We're currently working with PG&E to develop a joint letter to send out to our community, updating them on where we're at with line 147. As I reported last time, the significant issues with line 147 are that PG&E has agreed to move forward by two years their pigging project, so they'll be making some modifications to line 147, to allow it to be pigable, which is a probe that will be put through the line to generate data on the material and condition of the line later in 2014. In terms of the issue of pressure of the line, the city challenged, as you're aware, the pressure, the pressurization of line 147 at 330 pounds. That issue was before the California Public Utilities Commission. The commission felt that in terms of weighing all the information in front of them, which includes PG&E's need to service all their customers, that it would be in the public's best interest to operate line 147 at 330 pounds per square inch of gas. Our expert, I believe Greg can correct me here, was at 340 or 240, rather?
240.
Yeah, 240. So we do have a difference there. Despite the CPUC's decision, we have asked for what's called reconsideration of that issue. That reconsideration would take place at, at the CPUC, and the CPUC has not scheduled that reconsideration. And based on the information that we've had from the CPUC, we don't expect that to happen anytime soon. In the meantime, like I said, we are having fruitful discussions with PG&E on resolving this issue by gathering the data. And the only real way to gather all the data that we need is to do the pigging of the line. So we were very pleased that PG&E stepped up and agreed to, to move that project forward and expend significant resources to accomplish that. We're also talking with PG&E, and we'll have more information for you at your next meeting, which by the way, we'll have an action item for you because I'd like you to consider the language in this joint letter that's going out and authorize us to, the mayor to sign it and send that letter out. We'll also hopefully by then have a date of a community, a joint community meeting between PG&E and the city, so that we can address any concerns, comments, questions that the public might have about this issue and how we're proceeding with it. That's my report this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions? Matt?
I just have one, and that is if we could, it's going to be some time before the pressure is, well, it's not going to be dropped unless this appeal goes through, correct?
That's correct. It's not going to be dropped anytime soon.
So being that is the case, I'm just curious, you know, we raised the issue and we've made the public aware that there could be a problem there. We got turned down on our request to have the pressure reduced. What's left open in my mind, and I suppose in the minds of others, is what order of magnitude is the difference between what we were requesting versus what it's going to, what PG&E intends to run it at if something were to occur? And is there any way we can find that out?
I think, I think I follow you, and so you, let me rephrase just to make sure I understand. If worst-case scenario were to happen with line 147, what, what is the difference, the physical difference that, that could take place between the, our experts recommended 240 pounds per square inch and the 330 that the CPUC is allowing the pipeline to operate on?
Correct. That's exactly it.
We can certainly talk to our expert and, and see if we can find out, you know, a way to portray and provide that information to the council and the public.
Okay.
Other questions? I had a couple. One is, Jeff, maybe at the, the next time you report back to us, I think it'd be worth getting an update on the cost of the, of our efforts, because we authorized staff, I think it was a quarter of a million dollars, as I recall.
You, yeah, you set aside specifically a quarter million dollars.
So I think it'd be good to revisit that just to update, update the dais on, on where things are. I also, we had talked a meeting or so ago about putting together a letter for a Public Records Act request directed at the CPUC to basically ask them to disgorge documents so we could try and figure out why nobody, nobody at the CPU staff, CPUC staff told anybody in San Carlos that there was an issue between, I think it was March of 2013 and September when they actually notified you. Where does that stand? Greg?
Well, I'm, I'm working with staff to develop an appropriate request from a timeframe. And in the intervening time, which caused some pause, is that the city of San Bruno has filed a Public Records Act lawsuit against the CPUC. And I wanted to make sure that the records that are at issue there aren't already, haven't already been requested. I have not been able to do that yet.
Okay. There's, so I take it there's a, there could be a downside to putting in what amounts to a redundant request?
Well, I think we would just get the same answer that San Bruno received if, if the requests are the same. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a futile attempt. And, and I think we'd be way ahead of the issue if the exact same records are at issue in the San Bruno lawsuit.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a critical path item in any way, shape, or form. It more gets to my concern, I suspect other people's concerns as well, is why, why does it look like a sister agency didn't bother to tell us that there was a problem when somebody clearly knew because they had received the email thread, the infamous email thread? The, I actually like to follow up a little bit, Jeff, on, on the question and the dialogue that, that you and Matt were having. I don't know if we touched on this in some of the earlier reports, but another way of looking at it or approaching it is, a lot of people in the community would wonder and do wonder, given that we declared a state of emergency once before, and clearly the line is operating at higher pressure than, than our own experts would, would recommend, and we still stand by that, is why are we not doing other things? Why are we not declaring another state of emergency? Why are we not, or what, what else are we doing? I mean, some of the stuff I think the dais is aware of, but the public may not be, if you wouldn't mind spending a minute or two just describing.
Sure. I think, you know, declaring another state of emergency is always a possibility. That's certainly within my purview to declare one temporarily and the council's purview to, to reinforce that and, and set it in place long-term. We know a lot more about the line now than we did at the time. We know a lot, many of the questions that were raised by the engineer were answered, not all of them in our opinion, but many of them. And we've had an opportunity to go before the court temporarily one time, and then the CPUC, who's the regulatory agency of the state. In fact, we've gone all the way to the governor with this issue, and we're prepared to continue doing so if we, if we're not satisfied with the outcome. Now, one of the major changes is that, you know, during that time, and we recognize that there's, you know, there's no way to go back and reinvent records that don't exist. I mean, we can all, you know, wag our finger at PG&E and say, you know, you should have kept those records from the, you know, 40s, 50s, and 60s, and I'm sure you get probably complete agreement from everybody that works at PG&E today that they should have too. But there's nothing we can do to go back and, and recreate that. What we can do is create more data about the line, and we've done that to date. PG&E is going to be doing that in a significant way by making the line pigable and then pigging it to, to generate a lot of different data. PG&E has also agreed in the interim to step up their safety and monitoring of line 147. So that'll be taking place. They're going to be doing something on the order of magnitude of 10 times the, the monitoring and tracking of line 147 between now and when it's pigged and that data is analyzed. And we, we and PG&E truly know the condition and any flaws, or, or, you know, hopefully we find no flaws and that, that the line is in very good working order. That would, I'm sure, be PG&E's hope. That certainly will be our hope and our community's hope. So we've done everything that we can think to do when it comes to line 147, and we will continue to, to do that. But right now, our best course of resolving the issue, it looks to be working with PG&E as, as I've stated the last about two months now. You know, they, they recognize the community's fears around line 147 and the uncertainty around line 147 that, to a great extent, is generated by the fact that there's a lot of, you know, 25% of the line is basically in unknown condition with unknown material. And, you know, they're going to expend resources and greatly move up the timeframe to answer those questions and move forward. We've also got our experts' opinion, which while, while they differ from PG&E in terms of operating pressure, have provided some alleviation of some of our concerns around the safety of the line.
And, and I take it, by the way, that it would be our position and expectation, and we will do what is necessary to make sure that after they pig the line, that PG&E will provide us with the data so that our expert can look at it as well independently?
Us and the CPUC, yes.
Great. All right. Any other questions? If not, we will move on to, thank you, Jeff, to item 11A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the study of storm drainage improvements in the industrial road area. Matt, how are you this evening?
Good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. At the September 2013 council retreat, one of the six-months objectives that emanated from that retreat was for, for staff to provide counsel with action for recommendations of storm drain improvements along the industrial road drainage area. And that's what we have for the dais tonight as a recommendation and a corresponding resolution. But before we get into the action, I would like to introduce Dan Schaaf of Schaaf &amp; Wheeler. He's the consultant that helped us with the industrial road drainage study, and he's going to be talking about the study itself. going to be talking about the study itself and what the recommendations are.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Again, my name is Dan Schaaf. I'm an engineer with Schaaf &amp; Wheeler. We spent the last couple of months analyzing the industrial road area. Quick overview of what's happening, what causes the issues in the industrial road area. So you look from the image of elevations, the blue is the low-lying bay influence areas of San Carlos, Highway 101. The kind of lighter blue area cutting through the middle is industrial road and for your information, that light blue area is roughly about the 100-year tide level. If you looked at a map of this area circa 1899, the dark blue would be the, pretty much the shoreline of the San Francisco Bay. So very low-lying areas and topographically, water runs off the hillside. It moves very fast off the hillside. It tends to scour channels, it brings sediment. As we hit El Camino Real, things flatten out, water slows down, sediment drops out. So that's what we're dealing with and as you know, 101 and industrial road in El Camino Real are critical transportation infrastructure. So when we started this project, city staff had already identified quite a few what they called problem spots, places where we've seen flooding, where they've seen flooding, where there's just known issues. So that's where we kind of honed in our analysis. Again, you have three major creeks. You have Belmont Creek, Cordillares Creek that share borders with other communities and then we have Polgus Creek through the middle. There's one pump station on Polgus Creek at industrial road that services most of this area. This is about one square mile of drainage area, not including the, the creek channels, but the actual industrial road urban infrastructure. Most of it drains to the bay except for the area along Holly Street that drains to a lagoon operated by Redwood City. So what we did as engineers is we tried to reproduce what would happen in a 10-year storm with the existing pipe infrastructure. We looked at a high tide condition because we know that there is a coincidence between a, there is a correlation between high tides and storm events. You get surge, storm surge, increase in tides due to barometric pressure. And what you see here is the results that we see in our hydraulic model and if you compare that to the slide before, quickly, kind of produces the same. We're seeing problems in our model, the same place city staff is seeing or hearing about problems, which is good. That's our, what we call our model calibration. And what we're seeing as a, what's causing these issues is two things. First is the backwater effects from the bay tides, high tides, things can't drain out in low-lying areas. And then the other places where this, the line is serviced by a pump station is we're seeing pipes that are undersized, so there's not enough what we call conveyance in some of these pipe systems. So what would we do to fix this? We've identified quite a few projects. I could not tell you the total number, about 16 projects that range from clearing out channels that are choked with sediment and vegetation, upsizing pipes, adding inlets and infrastructure where needed, and then prioritizing these and working with staff to develop a CIP. So two projects I wanted to kind of highlight and I, we kind of see these as the, as engineers, the highest priority projects, meaning that we think they've solved the greatest amount of problems quickly. The first is removing sediment. This is Holly and 101. On the east side, on, call it the airport side of 101, there's a channel along the freeway on-ramp and it's choked. I don't know if you can tell in that inset picture, is it in there? That, that's the channel, it's actually a concrete trapezoidal channel full of sediment, full of vegetation and what happens is that slows the water down, its roughness, its resistance to flow backs everything up, backs it across 101, backs it by the In-N-Out Burger, backs, that channel doesn't flow. Everything on, at Holly and industrial doesn't want to drain, so we need to clear that out to let things get to Redwood City's lagoon. So this project would purely involve just scooping out all the sediment that's grown there and all the vegetation. And one thing I also want to point out, this is going to get worse over time, this isn't going to get better and also if we remove sediment, it's going to come back unless there's something to capture the sediment upstream. It's a, it's a natural process. The second project is a pipeline improvement project. This is, can't really pick out the street from here, but this is on the far right, that's Bing Street and right on the Redwood City border and the far left would be just past Howard. And what this would involve is a second line, what we call a parallel line. To add more conveyance, the Polgus, what we've discovered is the Polgus pump station has capacity to handle the 10-year storm. It's getting the flows to Polgus pump station that we need to do. Quick cost estimate, total about $7 million. Many of these are lower priority projects, meaning that we think these solve more in what we would call nuisance flooding. I'm sure if this happens in front of your house, it's more than a nuisance, but we've identified all these projects that would alleviate all the issues within that watershed. And the two that I mentioned before are what we're calling urgent and the price tags with the asterisks involve other communities, so there may be cost-sharing potentials for And with that, I'll let you ask me questions, but this is really interesting, this picture. This was Friday, February 28th, we had a high tide. It was supposed to rain that day, luckily it didn't. And if, this is Polgus pump station, we're looking west at industrial road and you can see there's only a couple of feet before the roadway, between the roadway and that high tide, so there is not a lot of room to deal with and when you think and take into account things like sea level rise, it's not going to go away. So with that.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Matt. Questions for staff? Matt?
I have one question, but it's the, for two different scenarios, if you will. The one involves the Holly 101 that you showed. In that case, you're dealing with water going to the Redwood City lagoon, correct?
Correct.
So if we clear that out, which I can very much see doing, but isn't it somewhat of a two-way, two-way street? Because you've mentioned the fact that high tides, you know, then you have water coming in and I'd have the same question with the pump station. You can pump water to the bay, but if the bay is rising and it's coming in at you, what are you accomplishing?
Right. So the Redwood City lagoon is pumped and it's actually, doesn't see the tidal effects, doesn't see the tidal fluctuation.
It's controlled.
And we did talk to Redwood City and they operate at a very low level during the winter, during the rainy months, so there's not much you can do there. It's, if that, if everything's cleaned all the way between, I'd say, industrial and Holly, all the way down to that lagoon, that system should work fine.
Okay.
But again, if one piece of it isn't cleaned out though, the system falls apart.
So then the, related to the other situation that's similar, if you're pumping, if this thing's pumping water into the bay, but the bay, we also have high tide, what are we accomplishing?
Well, the tides have a little bit effect on the pump station. It's mostly the performance of the pump. It's more what we would call head that it's, so pumps aren't as efficient when there's more water to kind of push against, but even at the high tide, we looked at a FEMA 100-year tide level just to test the system and that Polgus pump station would still work. It's just getting enough pipe conveyance to get it to the pump station, is what we're seeing.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob?
I don't know whether this, it might be for Matt, this question. I'm looking at my brand-new iPad that I'm now using for the staff report and I noticed that on the 101 Holly East channel, first of all, there are no urgents on this, this report.
Yeah, we've, this is a draft report and we, we actually got new survey information today, so we are finalizing a lot of these numbers and working with Matt to finalize the priority of a lot of these projects.
Okay, well, thank you, but when I need to speak with you, I will address you. Thank you. Matt, as I said, I'm not really thrilled with the fact that we get a staff report that says one thing and then all of a sudden it changes. I mean, I'm, I mean, I appreciate that it's up to date, okay? I get that, but it would have been nice if someone had said that because you've got two urgents up there, we don't have urgents here and something dropped $780,000, all of a sudden, I guess the, the price dropped?
Yes, so that is taken, we'll take that into consideration next time.
Okay, but the price dropped $780,000 on the one item?
Yes, based on the survey information, I believe.
Okay, because it's, I mean, it's confusing because you said 7 million, which it certainly adds to 7 million approximately, but it was 7.9 in our staff report, so, okay. The other question I had is, this is all well and good for this part, do we have a, are we going to be having any kind of report or a comprehensive citywide report on all the pipes and all the stormwater and everything else? That's, that's another one that's coming.
Yes, so there's, there's a citywide storm drain master plan.
Right, and that's coming.
Yeah, it's slated for the 1415 fiscal year. So I would say in the next budget cycle, it would be one of the CIP projects.
So I'm sorry, I beg your pardon?
In the next budget cycle, it would be one of the CIP projects.
So, but are we going to get a report on that?
Yes, after the 1415 year. Currently, right now, it's not budget, we're not budgeted to have.
I appreciate that, that it's not budgeted. I'm not looking at budget, I'm just asking, are we, I thought, and maybe I misunderstood, maybe this was the report, I apologize. I was told that we were going to get a report on stormwater and all kinds of infrastructure stuff soon and I, maybe, I guess this is it?
Yeah, for, as part of the strategic, strategic six-month objectives, this is the report that you will be getting. But there is another citywide storm drain master plan that will be coming in the next budget cycle.
And when is that, when is that going to come? You say, I understand the cycle, but what date are we looking at here?
So I would say at the end of the next fiscal year, so.
So July?
It would be July of 15.
So ballpark, we're going to get a big, another big report?
Yes.
Just going to talk about the whole thing?
That's going to talk about the whole thing minus this industrial area.
Certainly minus the industrial area.
Yes.
So is that report being processed now?
No, because it's not yet funded, so.
So when would we, and we're going to fund it in the next cycle?
Yes, it would be funded as part of, I think, I believe in April, staff will be coming to council for.
Okay, so in April, you're going to come for the staff, for the, for the funding and we hope to have it July or August 1st?
Yes, so the approach we have is that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I think it's actually July of 2015. I mean, it's, it's, maybe I misheard.
Yeah, that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing this July.
Oh, okay. It's, it's, you're going, you're basically submitting a budget request for the 1415 budget year to do the work?
Yes.
And maybe I misheard. When do you expect to actually do the work?
So once that budget cycle begins in January, or sorry, July of 2014, we'll start the study immediately.
I misunderstood then.
And now you've got me thoroughly confused. I, I guess I'm, I'm just not asking the right question. I apologize for putting you on the spot here, but.
That's okay.
This is one of the things, it's most, in my opinion, is one of the most important things we're going and I thought this was, well, I didn't know what this was, this is a little, a small part of the puzzle. So in April, in other words, in two months, you're going to come to us, you're going to ask us for some money to study the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to do that? And then in July or let's say August 1st, you're going to have that report for us?
In July, so when the, in July of 2014, we're going to start the report.
Okay, and that's not exactly what I heard. Okay, you're going to start the report?
And then in July of 2015, it should be completed.
So it's going to take a year?
It would take.
To do the report?
Yes, it could take possibly a year.
Okay, that's what, because I was real, I was thinking to myself, gee, that's great, amazing, you can do it in three months, that's fabulous. Okay, so it's going to take a year to do the report? So we're not going to get even any information on the total thing until July of 2015?
Yes.
Is there some way, well, another que, I think that's too, too long personally. I, I, why can't we, can't we up, can't we speed this up?
I guess we could speed it up by a few months if the council want, and I'm sure there might be some efficiencies that the, that Public Works can work with whatever consultants hired to do the study.
But it takes not long, it takes nine to 12 months to do one of these reports, huh?
Yeah, I believe, so for industrial road, this was just a small portion of the city in I think.
Understand.
How many months did it take to just run?
About three months.
Oh, that's a great, great gig, I'm in the wrong, wrong business.
You're retired.
I know. Shouldn't be, I think I'll open a store, see if I can get it to six months. Okay, so basically that's what we're, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, we are looking at this and that one's going to be humongous and, and that's going to be big dollars and then we're going to have to figure out how to pay for that. We might be able to figure out a way to pay for part of this, but that one's going to be a monster.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I didn't, I just got a little excited here because I'm like, what is this? Okay, thanks.
May I follow up on that because it's?
Sure, go ahead.
Not to take too much time here, but it is a bit curious to me, you know, years ago when it was just Bob and I and the dais and some other council members, we had talked about a whole watershed study and I've never seen that done. Here we are dealing with one part of the whole stormwater issue, but we've never, we've still never looked at the whole watershed issue and the creeks and where the water's coming from and, and what the responsibility is with the county because some of our watershed includes things like Edgewood Park and so forth.
Yes, like Mr. Schaaf explained, three of our creeks are actually, two of them, two out of three are actually shared. I think the goal of our department is ultimately to do that master plan study, which will discuss the watersheds themselves. I think staff realized the urgency that was expressed by council in order to get this report out and so as part of that, we, what staff did was they went and initiated this report for the industrial road drainage study to at least get some projects or some semblance of the low-lying areas where a majority of the issues are downstream. In addition to that, I think in the past year, staff, maintenance staff has cleaned, had a contract to clean the culvert under El Camino Real. There was a lot of sediment cleaned out in that area, so from that perspective, staff is working as diligently as they can to try to address this issue in anticipation of the citywide master plan.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for joining.
One more question. I'm, I'm assuming, and I always hate to assume, that if we do some of this work, it's not going to mean then when we get that report a year from now, it's going to be like, oops, we got to redo it or that wasn't really a good idea what we did.
No, no, so water or storm drain water usually tends to run downhill.
Right.
And most of the stuff that's backed up is usually down at the base of the hill, so these were, this is the area that staff identified that we should focus on first. So, and you know, if you were to work on this plan as master plan as a whole, you would focus on the low-lying areas first to begin with, so essentially what we're doing is we segmented off a section of the master plan so we can begin as quickly as possible.
Which in fact was going to be one of my questions, that effectively, the reason you did this area was that for a lot of reasons, this is the highest priority area overall in the community.
Yes, well, it's the area that should be addressed first because if you address anything upstream, you provide more conveyance down and you essentially create more floodings or more problems down in the industrial area.
I get that, I just, I just don't want to spend money and then spend it again. So if you're, you're, you're confident that if, whatever money we spend on this, we won't have to redo it because, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll already have solved that little, that part of the puzzle?
Yeah, so, no, we wouldn't. What we would do is as part of the citywide master plan, we would take this hydraulic model and put it in, put it, run it together with the citywide plan to see what the effects were in that area.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Cameron?
Why do we think of removing sediment or removing vegetation as capital improvement and not just maintenance?
I think specifically, some of the sediment's cleaning could be small enough work for us to do that if it was absorbed in our operating budget. Currently, I don't think our operating budget is large enough for some of these cleanings. Some of the cleanings themselves can come up to a million dollars sometimes, depending on how big the creek is and what you're going to excavate. An example is the PAF ditch clean that we did this past summer. I think that was just to clean out a few hundred lineal feet of just sediment and that came out to roughly somewhere around $200,000, $200,000 to just excavate out vegetation and such.
So, sorry, sorry to interrupt. It sounds like what you're saying is it's, it's capital improvement because it's expensive.
Yes, and it's actually, it's actually improving the capital, the public infrastructure that we have too by removing that sediment.
But I guess the question is, and I think that this is just a question and this is not an issue that, or this, this area policy is not something that I have a lot of expertise on, but as we go forward, we think about upgrading pipes and things, do, is there a thought that you build in the maintenance cost over the long term with the assumption that, you know, these things will fill up with sediment, vegetation will grow, they will need to be, you know, cleaned out? Or do you just let it get to the point where it's clogged and then you sort of re-appropriate money and, and clean it out at that point?
So that's, that's part of what our master plan is trying to help us accomplish is to determine what the maintenance need is for the entire city. For, you know, the few cities that I've worked for, majority of the issue with stormwater is, it's a funding issue. There's, there's not really any federal location where you can apply funds like transportation dollars. It's not, it's not, it's not really like a sewer where you can raise rates and so the challenge is trying to maintain that with the very little operating budget that we do have. Staff does try to, maintenance staff does try to go out and clean locations where they can, but just based on the funding, we're just kind of. they can, but, um, just based on the funding, we're just kind of, uh, limited to kind of localized flooding areas and kind of mitigating those, um, during the rain season.
So, but, just sorry, and last point on this, but if, so if we were to clean out, spend $400,000 to clean out the vegetation, like, to be more, to have more transparent budgeting, we should assume that, you know, every X number of years or decades, we're going to have to do that, is that right? And we should budget, we should not just assume it's a one-time expense, that there's ongoing maintenance, okay?
Understood, well noted.
When we get to budget, we should, it's a policy question.
Ron?
Thank you, just one question, I, I, maybe I missed it when you were discussing it with, uh, with Bob. Tell me again why the discrepancy between the, the cost in our report of the Holly East Channel and the one that's in the report tonight, that $700,000 difference?
Right, so, uh, when we started this project, um, we use the county's topography, which is aerial-based, not as accurate, and so when it flies over channels, a lot of times, that technology doesn't pick up vegetation, uh, it doesn't see the ground through vegetation too well, so we did our initial analysis based on county topography, but we had a contract, or subcontract with a surveyor to actually take survey cross-sections, and it was pretty difficult for them to get in there on a day with a low tide and make their way through those reeds and everything. Uh, so that data came in after, um, we did our quantity, we, we estimated the quantity that we think needs to be removed, how many cubic yards of vegetation and sediment. Once we received this more accurate data, we were able to, um, see where the sediment was and how much, um, to make a much more accurate estimation of the volume to be removed, and it's quite a bit less, it's about a third of what we originally estimated, so therefore the cost went down significantly, which is good, so, um, it's just, better data equals better estimates. And, um, and with that, I also want to mention that we had them survey the channels, Cordillares Creek and Belmont Creek, and we're working on an estimate, uh, between, um, Old County and the freeway, about how much sediment would need to be removed to restore those channels to, uh, their original design.
Are there any designs that can be built in along the, along the way when we talk about these capital improvement projects to make sure that, or to, you know, reduce the likelihood of the sediment, that the sediment is going to build up? Or is this just the way it is? It's just the way the topography is, there's going to be sediment?
It's a little bit of that, there's, there could be things, there could be upstream, um, capture of sediment, slow the flow down, have it drop out maybe in a, the city may be owned a parkland or some open space, where that could be, slow the flow through a wider floodplain, sediments would tend to drop out there, not make their way down. But it's going to be tough, it's part of the process, and it's going to always occur, and it becomes a ma, an annual maintenance issue if you want to keep that channel clean.
So on, so on an ongoing basis, once it's all cleaned out, if we budget X amount each year and just keep it clean, where it's going to save us money in the long run?
Uh, I would think so, and then, the other thing is permitting, to get a permit to do ma, annual maintenance is going to be a lot easier than trying to get a, a one-time permit every four or five years or whatever. Um, so once you get that maintenance permit, you're allowed to maintain it at a certain level, a lot easier to deal with.
And that's essentially what staff has done, they've, uh, we've worked with the Fish and Wildlife to try to obtain a, uh, an annual cleaning permit, and we're utilizing that for what we would call, quote unquote, our capital improvement projects for cleaning.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, gentlemen, both for the, the presentation, just, uh, a few questions, but first, first an observation, I just wanted to share with you, sort of, as I was listening to, uh, your conversation with Bob, um, I presented a lot of budgets and financial analyses over the years, and I remember many years ago, I once, once had a situation, uh, like what you're dealing with, because analyses always evolve, um, and so I presented some change numbers, and I got shot for doing that. Um, and then, uh, the next time, I said, okay, well, I'm not going to do that again, and, uh, I had change numbers, but I presented the old ones, and I got shot for doing that. Um, so, you know, uh, the, the, the recommendation I would make for you, and, and we have seen this happen in other instances, if things evolve, get us another copy of the stuff ahead of time, even if it's sitting on our dais, um, you know, here. It, it's, uh, and, and flag, you know, flag the things that have changed. Hey, we increased costs, decreased costs, we're going to talk about the changes as we go through it. That's just sort of a process observation for you. Um, the, um, I thought the discussion that, that was, was going on here for the last few minutes in response to the questions was very good, and I just want to confirm a couple of things. So, um, Matt, you were saying that, that this really is the sort of strategic area to work with in, in the community, uh, um, because like Bob was saying, I'd rather not, you know, spend money and then find out that, that we should have done something different. The one question I have is, have you done enough of a preliminary sense of the upstream aspect of this whole system to get a feel for whether there are, I don't know, I'm going to be very simplistic, blockages of some kind upstream that when you get around to fixing them, all of a sudden they're going to increase the flow rate, you go, whoops, I wish we had known that?
I think that's a good question, maybe Dan, you can elaborate?
Yeah, so, um, the improvements that we recommended, especially on the Holly Street system, um, do not see any upstream water, they're kind of isolated systems, the only way, um, upstream water would affect that system is if we had a spill from Belmont Creek, which we know can happen, but we really looked at that system isolated, um, again, the same on, um, the Polgas is all, um, controlled by the pump station, so that's not going to change from upstream conditions, and there is no, um, discharges to Cordillares Creek, so.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
Belmont again.
What?
Belmont again.
Yes, or Belmont again. Can, can we redirect the stream so that it actually is within the confines of what it's named after?
Yeah, there you go.
Um, so, a couple of my colleagues have asked about this as well, um, but again, to confirm, so, so, uh, your recommendation ideally would be that we have sort of a regularly scheduled maintenance program on some of these, what I think of as dredging and ripping out of vegetation. Um, and I suspect, folks, that the reason, it wouldn't surprise me that the reason that wasn't done is, there was a long period of time for the last few years where we were desperately looking to save money, and a lot of times what you do is you literally let the grass grow, okay? And in this particular case, that has some longer-term consequences that have to get adjusted. Uh, my sense from the dais currently is that we would like to try and move away from that and, and not ship problems downstream, you know, in, in time, and, and put the program together to kind of keep things going on an even keel. We'll see if we still have the fortitude to do that after people come back and tell us, well, that's great, but it's going to increase the operating budget by $2 million a year, and we apply that logic across everywhere, but that's our problem, seriously, that's our problem. You, you have to bring the options back to us, uh, in response to what we're, what we're suggesting to you. Um, and then, one, one particular question I had is, we had a meeting, uh, I think, Ron, you were at this meeting as well, with Novartis, the Novartis Research Lab, um, this was a while ago, I think it was, maybe, was it Matt? Somebody was with me. Um, anyway, they, they are prone to a particular, uh, degree of flooding, uh, and it's significantly negatively impacted their operations, because they, they do some manufacturing type stuff there. Um, this will address that?
So, uh, uh, Novartis themselves initiate their own drainage study, I think it was through, uh, RECO, another, uh, engineering company, to take a look at the improvements that they could do in, in there. I've not yet seen the report itself to understand what improvements that they were looking at doing at their location.
Okay. Um, some of the things you talked about tonight's reminded me of comments that they had made in the meeting. Um, it's, it sounds like, I mean, I would encourage staff to coordinate with them, particularly if they're doing some power law work, um, we can live off of each other's analyses.
Yes, uh, before we started this study, we, we were working with RECO, um, on trying to obtain that data, they just haven't, I believe they haven't finished their analyses yet, to be able to share with us.
Actually, we have been in contact with RECO, and they're willing to share all their information, so it's, it's very helpful.
Great, I like it when people share, sharing is good. Um, all right, if we don't have any other questions, uh, we actually do have, this is, believe it or not, a resolution, so we're being called upon to do something, or is there another question?
No, I, I, what I was going to do, if I can, the city attorney can stop me if this is not okay, because of the discussion that I've heard, um, I was going to, I'm trying to find it here, the wording, uh, here's what I would, my motion is to adopt a resolution approving the study of storm drainage improvements in the industrial road area, and direct staff to include project recommendations as part of the 2014-16 capital improvement program, and to include some, uh, preliminary study on, uh, operating costs to keep what we've cleaned out clean. Is that all right? Yeah, so that's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Um, discussion? I, I, yeah, I think that, I think that addendum is good. Um, any other comments, discussion people want to bring up? Seeing none, we will call the roll. Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. All right, that takes us to item 11B. Um, actually, I should also mention in passing, though, before we get to that, that, uh, we did not, uh, complete our discussion, um, during closed session before the open session meeting, so we are going to be adjourning back to that, uh, when we're done with the open session. So item 11B, consideration of introducing an ordinance adding San Carlos Municipal Code Section 12 dot 01 encroachments and use of city rights of way and public utility easements. Greg, is there a reason why your motions are always really long?
Well, it's a long, it's a long ordinance, so.
It's a long ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Greg Rubin, City Attorney. Um, tonight you, um, have before you, uh, an ordinance to regulate, um, the city rights of way and public utilities easements within the city. Um, it's a comprehensive approach, um, you might recall, a, a few months ago, um, I reported that this was one of the things that you'd see coming, um, in response to, um, some of the issues we've had with the management of our right of way and being informed by utilities, um, especially one incident, um, last year, and when PG&E did not inform us of work that they were doing in, in our, uh, public rights of way, that the city, um, has a strong interest of knowing about. So that, one of the, um, features of this ordinance is to address that scenario and provide with the force of law that, um, public utilities who are doing work in our right of ways, whether it's an emergency or something that's part of their plan, improvements, we will be notified, um, and a permit will be required for that work. We did address that scenario of an emergency situation, but we are required to be notified, um, within four hours, or if we're not in business hours, um, then a county, um, the county will be advised, um, also, a permit will be required, um, to be applied for within two days. Um, we also addressed something that, um, wasn't featured anywhere in our code before, and that's the work in the public utilities easements. Public utilities easements can run across private property and intersect with our rights of way, or across, um, city property, um, such as, uh, our, our parks, um, that, or city hall, or, or other, um, city property that is owned, um, in addition to the utilities that are allowed to be placed in rights of way. The ordinance also addresses issues, um, that we foresee might arise, because some of our, um, public utilities have franchise agreements, so they have a right to be in the right of way, but what this is doing is requiring standards for use of our, in our rights of way. Um, so there's a lot of delegation to the Public Works Director and to the city engineer to deal with the technical issues that might arise. Um, we have a, uh, it's a protection of our rights of way, where if, if we have a newly paved street, um, it's two years minimum before, um, any, any curb cuts can occur in, in those areas. We have maintenance standards, um, for if there is a cut, um, the standard, um, has to be acceptable to the Public Works Director, that the patch won't deteriorate after a short period of time, it'll match, um, existing materials, et cetera. We have a security requirement, bonding, um, things of that nature to protect, um, the city in case, uh, work isn't completed satisfactorily, um, and we have provisions for enforcement, um, if work, if we, um, are doing our own project in our rights of way, similar to the East Side Connect project, and we see that, um, conflicting utilities, um, after a request are not being relocated in a timely manner in conjunction with our project, that we would have the ability to force the, the relocation of those types of interfering, um, utilities. There are other aspects of the ordinance, um, that are, um, addressed in there that are not as major as what I've just outlined, but, um, I'm here to answer, answer any questions, and Jay Walter, Public Works Director's here, if there's any technical questions about the management of the right of way.
Questions for staff?
I have a few. Um, regarding, uh, commercial businesses or residential property owners, already, when they do work in the right of way, they're required to get a, a permit to do so, and they pay a, a fee and so forth. This doesn't impact those conditions at all?
This is superseding those existing provisions. Um, right now, um, we have, um, scattered throughout our code, um, places where an encroachment permit is required.
Mm-hmm.
This spells out the detail of, of the permit and what's required to get a permit.
So it, it affects it only as like an umbrella?
That's right.
Yeah. Um, and then the other question I have is related to, um, some of those powers that you outlined that are in here. One of the things that I've taken note of, especially this year, uh, end of 2013 and beginning of 2014, is you drive around town and there's a number of projects going on, and it's almost like, you know, okay, I can't go Britton, so you go over to Howard, and I can't go Howard, because they got something going on over there. Um, and, and there's actually been occasion where I've gone into the city manager's office, and I've said, you know, what's going on in this street? And, uh, no disrespect to the city manager, but he doesn't know, because, I guess, from what you're talking about in here. Um, so my question is this, does what's in here give us any power to say to, uh, someone who approaches us and wants to do work in the right of way, yes, you can do it, but we're going to schedule you for this time, because we've already got, you know, we've got Britton closed, we can't have Howard closed at the same time, because we know traffic's going to spill over and so forth. Does this give us that ability to control some of that at all?
It, it absolutely does, that's going to be part of the permitting process.
Mm-hmm.
We've, there's, uh, quite a bit of information that will be required, um, when someone applies for a permit, uh, that includes the time, place, and manner, um, issues that we frequently need to address. That's one of the difficulties that staff has had, um, we don't know when utilities, um, are doing work in the rights of way, and we, we're, the work gets scheduled, um, without our knowledge, and then at 8:00 AM, the, the crews are setting up.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the, um, things this ordinance will address.
And one more question in that regard, uh, and this is something that I've noticed as well, uh, in, in some cases, like when, uh, work was being done in front of Kelly Moore's plant, they did have some rudimentary detour information, but I've seen other projects going on, they've narrowed it down to one lane or, or no lanes at all, and, you know, if you don't know the town, you don't know where to go, because there's nothing there that says this is the detour route or whatever, does it, would we require that?
Uh, the Public Works Director will have discretion to require those types of, that level of detail, depending on the scope of the project. Um, in many cases, a, a flagman with a, with a stop, slow sign will be sufficient, sometimes a full, um, detour, traffic control plan, um, with, with the appropriate signage will be required.
Okay, very good, thank you.
No, Mr. Grocott, I have all the ones that I was.
Cameron?
Good questions.
Ron?
Um, well, uh, some Matt's questions got me to thinking, uh, I don't know if this, I was reading through this and trying to see if it would accomplish it, but, and I don't know, I don't want to add a lot of burden to the staff, but I'm wondering if there could be, because we'd have this ordinance and requires permits and such, if from that, we'd have this ordinance and requires permits and such, if from that, we would get a schedule of projects that could be published, either on the website, it would, you know, it's going to go through the city manager's office or it's going to go through the Director of Public Works office. That's something that could just flow to us, so, you know, when Matt's sitting at the plantation having coffee and somebody says, what's going on? He's got an answer.
That is something that can come out of this and certainly this, having this kind of put all in one place and be the umbrella code reference for encroachments in the right-of-way is a key thing because it'll be the large private projects, it'll be the emergency projects, it'll be all that whole host of projects which we can list and our permit staff will be able to kind of put that out. We can even create a, say, a weekly type of a report that would indicate which ones, say, the larger projects that may impact traffic because we're going to know about them in advance.
Right. That'd be great.
So, that's definitely something we can do with the information we're going to have because of this.
Great. Thank you.
Greg, just a few questions, and actually, some of these, in reading the material, I think I know the answers, but I just want to make sure. We've had a couple of experiences recently that, that actually are good tests of this proposed ordinance. One of them, one of them is what happened with Cal Water on Old County Road, as I recall, right, Jeff? Whereas I understand it, it was sort of water, an operable water line that we didn't realize was there, got struck, leak, call Cal Water, oh, it's not our line. They call back later and say, oops, it is our line, but by the way, we don't know where the valves are, or we found the valves, but we paved them over. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make light of the situation because it actually caused some property damage and it could have been a lot worse than it was. No ordinance is going to prevent some organization from doing something dumb, but does this ordinance give us the ability to incentivize Cal Water in a situation, or a Cal Water-type situation like that where there's a fine that can be levied on the organization for failing to basically know where its lines are and for failing to be able to respond accurately to requests for information?
There's a provision in the code that requires people who are in our right-of-way to come in with, to get a permit, even if the lines are already in place because there are ongoing uses of the rights-of-way. So, that's one incentive to get them to come in knowing that there's a permit. The ordinance has two provisions that deal with the issue you're talking about. One is, provides me with the discretion to pursue a public nuisance case in court to cite with administrative or criminal fines or to pursue it as a misdemeanor violation of the code. The fining under state laws limited to $1,000 per incident per day, but that could accumulate to larger numbers if, after they're cited and we develop the evidence that it was an ongoing separate violation for each day. That's one avenue that we could do. And the nuisance attitude, if it's something that, or the nuisance problem is something that we can address. It's always fact-based in those scenarios that we would need to consider the problem and determine whether or not we would need the force of a court order to compel some action.
Jay, it looks like you want to add something to that.
I did, and the provisions in the, in this ordinance also provide prior to acceptance of a permit project that the as-built drawings are provided to the city so that we, in theory, will have better records of those facilities that are in place so that if we had to, if we have to know what's there, we'll at least have records of something there which then we can check against the projects and the way it gets marked in the field and that kind of thing. So, it's a, I think, a little bit of a safeguard there because when we, when they don't get permits, we don't get maps on where their facilities are.
Right.
And that obviously impacts the city because if it's a, whether it's a project from another utility or it's a city project, time is money and if the project's delayed, that could end up being a change order for the city. We really need to know where these facilities are. And if we, if we have an incident that, like the one that happened last week, that has the effect of causing a delay in the project and increased cost.
The second example of something that happened lately, also on Long Old County Road with the East Side Connect project where we discovered that there was an abandoned 24-inch gas line, as I understand it, which I also understand was properly abandoned, I mean, some, the appropriate procedure was followed. Nevertheless, it caused us, as I understand it, some additional cost and it was certainly not something we would have preferred to have known ahead of time. How does, does this ordinance make it easier for us to interface with that kind of abandonment procedure? That almost seems like a chain of custody kind of thing. It's like, well, if there's a state set of rules for abandoning things in place, then somebody has to hand off the information to like us because we have a long-term interest in knowing what's under the ground. Or can we hold the utility separately accountable, saying, fine, you can abandon it in place, you're still responsible for knowing in case we have to ask you what's there? But in any event, the general question of what do we do, how does this address and improve the situation about abandoned-in-place utility lines?
Well, I'm not sure about the last part of your question, but as far as the, for a utility who would approach us to say, we're going to put in a new telecommunications line or something like that, and we're going to abandon the old one in place, then we're going to request the records that they have for that old line so that we have it on file. And we're assembling kind of GIS layers for utilities that we can, that we have within our right-of-way so that we can have a layer that would be abandoned facilities that we can overlay whenever we need to look and see, when we're trying to figure out what's out there and get an idea that the engineer who's designing it's got to know that abandoned facilities are there.
But, okay, and that's good, but essentially, I guess, unlike the situation, Greg, where you were describing, they would have to get a permit for an existing line, like the Cal Water example I used, that wouldn't apply to an abandoned-in-place gas line, right? Because it's technically not theirs anymore. They're not operating it, so.
I think that would be, that may or may not be the case, and there may be at the CPUC, because the CPUC is the ultimate authority on the pipeline system, that might be where that information would be, I think, as you pointed out. But we, I was just looking at the ordinance, we have a section on abandoned lines and I thought I had it here. So, if there's an intent, the code reads where a utility wants to abandon the line, they have to notify us within 30 days. And then we're trying to address, and then all facilities need to be subject to approval of the city, removed, abandoned in place, or dedicated no later than 180 days after the permit is applied for. This part of the code is also recognizing that jurisdiction of the CPUC, so we can't force them to actually necessarily remove the line or, because they may say, and remember this deals with all kinds of utilities, it may be that the line is temporarily abandoned and out of use, but they want to reserve the right to be able to use the facility later, so we have to, we had to address that in the language of the ordinance.
Okay. So, it may do part of what I was concerned about, but not all. And then the other question and the other example recently was that situation up on Chestnut Street that you were personally able to help us with, where the rainstorm caused a AT&amp;T line to sag down into the street, so the street actually had to be closed. And they basically were being highly unresponsive about fixing the problem or even acknowledging the problem.
In front of the mayor's house?
It wasn't in front of the mayor's house, although, although I have to admit, the mayor was, mayor's a little slow and he was walking underneath it about three or four times before he noticed, that doesn't look right, the street's closed and why isn't somebody fixing it? But the, so, does this, does this ordinance give us any additional ammunition, for lack of a better term, for trying to enforce a better standard of responsiveness in situations like that?
Well, technically, if those, if those poles in that location were in the public right-of-way, then we would have the permitting requirement that would apply to those, to those poles. Some poles are on private property and not necessarily in a public utilities easement, but I'm trying to address both those scenarios with this ordinance. So, yeah, the short answer is yes. I think our ordinance is intended to deal with that, but it's through the, through the enforcement of the permit and the enforcement mechanisms, administrative fines.
So, so the permit, so in other words, it sounds like the permit language would have to contain in it something like, if there's a problem with your line that impedes the right, the public right-of-way, you must fix it within X days or something like that.
And one of the other things that we gain in this is the.
I'm sorry, is that, is that correct? That's the kind of thing? Okay.
One of the other things that we gain in this is the more frequent interactions with the various permates, especially the franchise holders, so that the contact information for those, the emergency numbers and the, say, the regular folks that, that would be, we would need to contact when something like that happens. To a degree, on some of these, we don't know who to contact because they don't come in and get permits. And so, this way, we're really, I think, going to increase our database.
You have a name at least. Yeah, you have a name. And last question, a friend of mine was telling me that, I think it was Hillsborough adopted a provision regarding patching of streets when utility work was done, that, that either required in all cases or gave the Public Works Director the authority to require what's called curb-to-curb patching, so that they, you know, it was a more uniform look, I guess. And I looked at the language in here, it looks like it's within the discretion of the Public Works Director as to what type of, and nature of patch is required, but we have a fair amount of flexibility there, right?
We do, and, and the, that would be in the patches that are required within the two-year period and the general standard that the Public Works Director would have to make sure that the repair is appropriate for the location. So, I think we would be well within our powers if there was a repair required because of an emergency situation within the two-year period to require the curb-to-curb patching. And the rest is going to be on a case-by-case basis. It might be that there have been other patches on the street and it's not so glaring, or it might be that it's not large enough to justify such a, such a big commitment on the part of the utility.
Yeah, I'm fine with having discretion in staff. I just want to make sure they have the discretion to go that far if that's deemed appropriate. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Matt.
Oh, your, your thinking there had me coming up with one more question.
I'm sorry about that.
Reading the background here, it says that what you're trying to do, well, it says, the city of San Carlos has historically not had a comprehensive regulatory program to manage the city, the city right-of-way and utilities. And I'm wondering if what you, if you mean to necessarily couple those together with what you're doing here, or is this meant to mean a comprehensive regulatory program to manage the city right-of-way and/or the utilities? And here's why I'm asking the question, and maybe this is a, you know, my question leads to another discussion, another ordinance, which is fine. But what I'm thinking about, you talked about utilities, abandoned utilities and those kinds of things, and it brought to my mind of just misuse of the right-of-way, as in, some guy decides he doesn't need the transmission in his car anymore, so he's going to dump it at the side of the road and leave it there for someone else to pick up. Or somebody moves out of an apartment and they don't know what to do with their mattress, so they leave it by the side of the road. These are things that happen, right? I see this around town on occasion. Yeah. You know, in my neighborhood, there's a guy that comes around and feeds feral cats and leaves cat food in the right-of-way because it's between the sidewalk and the curb. So, you know, addressing these kind of things in managing the right-of-way. And if you get caught doing some of these things, what are you responsible for in the cleanup? I'll give you just one more example, is some guy decides to change his oil at the side of the, you know, in front of his house and spills oil on the pavement. Yeah, there's laws in place for environmental cleanup, but what about our pavement and the infrastructure part of it? So, maybe this doesn't intend to address that, maybe that's, like I said, you know, something for another day, but I asked the question.
Well, I think we have, there are some rules and regulations regarding illegal dumping and littering and that would subject to someone to the same $1,000 fine. And perhaps on the illegal dumping, actually, some more severe penalties because that fine, if there's a patch of oil there, it's not, it's there until it's cleaned up, and so you could have multiples of that $1,000 fine if it's not cleaned up. So, and it depends on who does it, is it intentional, negligent? I've actually, I did prosecute a case once upon a time in Foster City where someone dumped, used paint into the lagoon, and from that experience, I can tell you the judges in this county take it very seriously, but that gentleman got the maximum fine and the judge really felt the jail might be indicated for something so egregious like that. So, you know, we have to be, use some prosecutorial discretion, but hey, if, if somebody is habitually dumping oil, that'll definitely get my attention, or dumping car parts, et cetera, on the.
The bottom line is, we have ordinance, is it cover those kinds of things, it doesn't need to be in this particular material.
And then, just procedurally, this is an ordinance, you're, at the bottom, it says, our alternatives
are to approve adding the code. Are we really introducing the ordinance or are we adding the code?
We're introducing the ordinance.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So, if I may, I would just make a motion that we introduce ordinance.
1474.
1474 of the city of San Carlos, adding San Carlos Municipal Code Section 12.01 encroachments and use of city right-of, rights-of-way and public utility easements.
Second. There's a motion to the second. Any call for further discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. All right. Now, we will go back to item 9F, which we removed from the consent calendar, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend a professional services agreement with applied water resources to perform an environmental site assessment for the landmark site.
And I don't really have any questions on it or need a report, per se, but I did vote against us getting involved with the landmark site as a purchaser, and I thought, you know, to be consistent.
Wanted an opportunity to vote against this.
Yeah, I needed the opportunity to vote against this too because I just principally don't think we should be involved at all, and that would extend to this action.
Fair enough. Let me poll the dais. Does anybody else actually wish to get a report on this item?
No.
No. In that case, assuming the, assuming, Greg, this is okay to do, I will move directly to entertaining a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 2014-dash.
23.
23?
Yes.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to amend a professional services agreement with applied water resources to perform an environmental site assessment for the landmark site.
I second.
There's a motion to the second. Any call for discussion? I realize I had not been asking this before, any public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. And with that, I believe that takes care of all of our business tonight. We will adjourn back to closed session and we are adjourning in honor of Bob Grisilli, who has joined the 21st century with his iPad.